Okay, we are live now.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, May 24th, 2022 to order, please. Is there any declaration of the current interests and nature thereof? Seeing none. Adoption of the open session agenda be resolved that the committee of the whole is hereby approve of the open session agenda dated May 24th, 2022 as presented. Could I have a mover in a second around that, please? Councillor Kirby, Councillor Wiggins, all in favor, please? So pass, thank you. One sec here. So today we have a presentation with respect to our municipal asset management plan for the town of Bancroft. Just a couple of comments before we get into this. This is a massive document that council members only received late last week. I know many have tried to go through it and there's actually some other reports that follow up later on in the agenda that relate directly to this. So having spoke to several members today, recognizing the fact that we really can't do it justice. What our plan for today is we are going to hear the overview that is going to be presented by WSP and giving everybody time to hear that and then go look at the reports again, or if you haven't had a chance to in more detail. And committee will convene again at a later date and we'll chew this off in chunks, more or less in the following a format in the report there. So I see we have Bernadette O'Connor and Kevin and Andrew, and I'm not sure from WSP, I'm not sure who's going to lead this, the presentation, but I'm going to turn the floor over to WSP at this time.
Thank you very much. I'd like to share my screens and okay. Set successful? Can people see my screens?
Yes, I can see it.
Yes.
Thank you very much. So this is on the asset management plan, municipal asset management plan. And as you say, it is an enormous document because it is the entire, the, all the core services rolled into one document. So we tried to structure it so that you could separate out the asset management plan for each of the main service areas and then have an overall summary. So the team you have with you here is myself. I'm the manager for municipal asset management. Very quickly, my background is 23 years as a municipal engineer and followed by 22 years as a consultant, originally from New Zealand, been in Canada 12 years and asset management is my day job. Also have Andrew Mansfield, who is a local, works in the, in the local area and Kevin Morosky, who's lead for our water and wastewater area. Unfortunately, Marty Gordon, due to serious family illness, is unable to join us today. Marty did the financial analysis. So if we have questions later on, detailed questions about that, we may, will take those questions and report back to you separately in time for your review. So the agenda today, we're going to have an overview of the key outcomes. Look at the components of the asset management plan, the process for analysis that we went through for determining the forecasts, major projects and priorities, and then some time for discussions and questions. Before we get into that though, I'd just like to touch first on why asset management? Now, the key thing that asset management brings to the business is visibility. And we all know that if you don't have, if you have little or no warning for a major event, especially a major expense or a risk, a major asset failure. If you have little or no warning, then your costs and risks always go up because you have no opportunity or options for reducing the impact of that. But if you know about it before it happens, you know, a good amount of time before it happens, your options and opportunity increase and so your risks and costs reduced. The other issue for Ontario, of course, is the Ontario regulations, compliance with that. We have asset management plans are required for all municipalities and the level of service also has to be measured. And next year and the year after, you need to be reporting that the level of service is achievable. You also need to, asset management, to help you manage expectations and find your way to what is affordable and sustainable for your community, giving you the information to apply for grants and, and it's good business for preparedness for the future. So let's just have a look at the key outcomes. First of all, the value of your assets. Just in these four core service areas, water, wastewater, bridges, roads and stormwater, you've got 84, nearly 84 and a half million dollars worth of assets by today's value. And as you can see, a third of that value is tied up in roads and storm, a third is in water, 22% is in wastewater and 8% is in the cost, in the value of your bridges. If we look now at the overview of the state of infrastructure, we can see here that the quantity of assets in those different groups, the average age, this is, and the average expected life and the average condition, these are all weighted by the value of the assets. And we can see that the condition is a one to five rating. So an average overall of 2.6 puts it in the fair to good, between fair and good range.
Okay.
We've got the current replacement cost and then we have the average per annum renewal cost. What this is, is that if you take all of the asset replacements that are required over a 30 year period, and it's actually for you, it's similar, the 25 and 30 year period works out to the same averages. If you take all the asset replacements required, divide it by the 30 years, then this is the average amount per annum. It's 2.4 million dollars is what you need to be able to sustain those replacements over the medium term. Just to provide context here, this is a graph showing the construction history or the asset age profile. So one of your bridges, the Egan Bridge was constructed in 1922, so it is 100 years old this year. Others were constructed in the 1950s. The earliest water and wastewater infrastructure was built in the 1940s and 1950s respectively. So some of it is 80 years old. The chart shows that the largest expansion period for the town's infrastructure occurred in the 1970s and 80s. And the current replacement value of those assets, just in those two years, that, those decades there, is $36 million. This highlights for us the need to understand if all of those assets that were built in that time have a similar lifespan or not. We know that roads in the 1980s, that majority of that expenditure was roads. The roads have a shorter lifespan than the water and wastewater. But a lot of the water and wastewater assets, especially pipes, will have a similar lifespan. So we need to understand whether they are likely to fail around the same time so that we can plan a replacement strategy to spread these costs and that amount of construction work over a period of time to keep it reasonable and achievable, both from a funding point of view, but also from a practical point of view with that much construction and level of disturbance to the community. So this is looking a little deeper at that overall condition profile. So the condition of Bancroft assets at the portfolio level or overview is pretty good with more than half the value of the assets are in good or very good condition and only 3% are in very poor condition. But there are two things that we must not lose sight of, and they are the value that these percentages represent and the dollar impact of what is coming up. Remember, assets age every year, just like us. They get another year older and closer to when they need to be replaced and their risk of breaking down or needing more maintenance increases. We have an immediate issue of $2 million for bridge work. But coming up very soon is another $5 million of aging water and wastewater assets that are currently in poor condition. And in the longer term outlook, there's 12 million of wastewater assets and nearly 18 and a half million combined in other asset groups that are currently in fair condition. But these assets will continue to age, their condition will deteriorate until they also need replacements. The risk profile. Now, the risk is a combination of how important the asset is to the service, so the impact of that asset suddenly failed, and how likely is it to fail? So you can have high importance assets that have a low risk because they are still young and a long way off. They have a very low likelihood of failure. And you can have lower important assets coming up with a higher risk because they are very close to failing. So here we see, at the moment, you've got 3% by value of your assets were in very high risk and 3% in high risk. So we have the the Egan Bridge and the Bridge Street, East Bridge and Station Street and York River Bridges. These are all in poor or very poor condition. We have some hydrants, valves, the water tower, coatings for the water tower, components for water booster pump stations, the Bridge Street Pump House and wastewater lift stations and components at the wastewater treatment plant. These are assets that are in that poor and very poor category. Like a very poor and very poor, high, sorry, and very high risk because they are in poor condition and very near failure. Another thing to consider is we have the potential INI infiltration and inflow affecting our wastewater treatment capacity. And so this is, as the pipes get older, especially wastewater pipes, they will have, allow more ingress of groundwater into the system, overloading the wastewater treatment plant. Here's the medium term forecast for asset renewals. You can see there the 25 year average of 2.4 million dollars. The immediate term, the next five years, the average is $2 million a year for the next five years. However, you'll see a large component of that $4.5 million is in year one or year zero, current year. These are assets that have been identified based on their asset type, material that they're made out of and their current age. They are expected to be at the end of their life. These assets need a more detailed investigation to determine if that is true, if those assets truly need to be replaced now or can they last another two years? Is there some intermediate work that we can do to make them last five years? That level of detail has not been done for the current asset management plan. The assessments that were done for this were visual inspection only of some above ground assets, some CCTV information and other reports and analysis that were done on condition. Bridges, the last lot of bridge inspections, the last lot of road inspections. But for underground assets, it is not, there was not an invasive inspection done of underground assets. So the asset management plan. A mammoth document. I would recommend in the future that you actually break it into separate documents for each of the service areas as a standalone document. The layout of it at the moment, there's an executive summary, then there's a section that provides you with context and the highlights, the organizational perspectives, so to speak, and a section on the improvement plan. Then you have the four sections for each of the different service areas. Within each service area, after the introduction, there's a section on the level of service. This is an important requirement for the OREG compliance. Then there's information on the asset inventory. What do you own now? The quantity, the condition, the value of those existing assets. The life cycle strategy, what that does is it talks about how are you going to manage the different groups of assets within each of these service areas? This identifies inspections that you're going to do, preventative maintenance work that you're going to do. Preventative maintenance is the work that you do to make sure the asset lasts its lifespan. It's like changing the oil in your car. If you don't change the oil in your car, you'll soon have a lot of engine troubles. That's a preventative maintenance task. The growth and demand section looks at what the predictions are, what, what future capacity you may need, and then the financial strategy, wrapping up the value of these assets, the renewal forecast, the operations and maintenance demand and assumptions and limitations. And throughout the asset inventory, life cycle and growth demand, we also look at the risks related to those works. So highlights and limitations of the current plan. Data gaps is one. Many of the assessments have been, the condition assessments have been age-based condition assessments. This is saying that for this type of asset, at this, at this age compared to its expected lifespan, we would expect it to be in this condition. Okay. The we are recommending that more detailed investigations are done for the short term renewals. These are the candidate projects that are being identified in that one to five year period. Do more detailed investigation on those. The asset management plan, as it is at the moment, does not take into account any upgrades to the assets required for climate change, climate impacts. That is a study of the climate impacts for, for the area and what, what infrastructure might be needed. What upgrades might be needed for that was out of scope for this particular one. The OREG compliance level of service is necessary. But now, having identified what the level of service is, we need to start tracking the performance against that service and the cost to provide that level of service. Because in the not too distant future, within the next two years, you need to be saying, what is the level of service that you are going to put as your target for the next 10 years? And you need to demonstrate that that is achievable for your community, that is, it's affordable and sustainable. So it's very important, not just the measurement of performance, but the measurement of cost for that level of service. The information that you get developed for the asset management plans and the ongoing improvement of that information allows you to make these longer term plans, to have that, that bigger picture of what is coming up, so you don't have surprises. And allows you that opportunity and options for mitigating the impact of, of that work and of the cost of that work to the community. The asset management plan information also provides you the opportunity to coordinate work for better efficiency and to reduce costs. Make sure that if you're going to dig up the road to replace the water, assess whether or not the wastewater should be done at the same time, assess and bring in the timing for the road reconstruction to coordinate with that, so you're not digging up a road that was just rehabilitated two years ago. The current state highlights is a lot of your assets are in good condition. That's not to ignore the fact that you do still have a significant component, a significant volume of assets in fair and poor condition. At the moment, just a small number of assets that are, percentage of assets that are in very poor condition. But as I say, every year, those assets migrate further into, from good to fair, from fair to poor, from poor to very poor. Your current financial position right at the moment is, is reasonable for, for the immediate needs, but you have limited capacity to fund your future renewals. So this is something that you're going to need time to absorb this information and discern the best way forward for the community. And there are changing trends in your people since COVID of people staying in the area. You've got new developments, so there will be a need to review your growth trends. Historically, what has happened in the past is not a good indicator post-COVID of what is going to happen in the future. And you'll need to, with that, reassess your upgrade needs. So the process for analysis. This just tells you first of all, some of the source data that went into this report. So there was an update done to the roads need study and an update done to the COVID inspections. And there was the bridge inspection data. We did do some general observation inspections of water and wastewater facilities that were above ground, not all of them, and it was not in the scope of the work, did not allow for those investigations to be done in detail. And we also used the Violia capital forecast based on the information from the operations and maintenance provider. So the process here for determining the, the assets, the candidate projects for, for replacement. First of all, we applied the risk model to the inventory. So this was determining what is the remaining life of each of the assets and how important is each asset to the provision of the service? That then determined an individual risk rating for every asset. We determined the life cycle activities. How was these, each of these types of assets to be managed? Were they going to have preventative maintenance or not? See, not all assets. It's not, the cost benefit is not there to do preventive maintenance on every type of asset. If the asset is easily replaced, low value, you know, you can pull it out and put a new one in just as part of operating procedures and it has little impact on the community, then there's very little benefit of investing the cost in preventive maintenance. But if it's a high risk asset, if it's an important asset, that would have a significant effect on the community or on the service if it suddenly failed, then those are the assets that you invest preventative maintenance measures in. Those are the assets that you inspect, you keep an eye on it. Those are the ones that you program to replace before it fails and not wait until it fails. So we've identified the life cycle activities for the assets and then we investigate to confirm year one. So the, we identify from that which assets are forecast to fail for year one. They are then prioritized according to their, their risk. And then we repeat the same process to do the, the projects, to identify the projects for year two, three, four and following. There is preventative maintenance measures that can be done and there's rehabilitation measures that can be done to extend the life of the assets. So this is why we, after looking at risk, we assess the life cycle strategy models. For example, for sealed roads, you can do a number of rehabilitation techniques to, on the surface of the road, crack sealing for one to, to make the road last a little bit longer. And this is the kind of things that you will look at when you're wanting to coordinate a road, re, try and get a road to last a bit longer so that it can be coordinated with the time that you want to replace the sewer or the water underneath the road. The influences on the accuracy of the forecasts are without a doubt the useful life of the assets. If, when the detailed investigation is done on those year one to five candidate projects and it's identified, for example, there's a number of hydrants and valves that have been identified as being at the end of their theoretical lifespan. If we do a detailed investigation of those candidate projects in the year zero and we find actually they will easily last another five years, then we can change the lifespan expectancy for hydrants and valves. That will then push that expenditure out over the, over the whole 25 year term. So getting, doing that detailed investigation to get greater certainty of estimated useful life in your local context is very important. Because how long those assets last in your neck of the woods compared to somebody else can be very, very different. The condition and the estimate for the remaining useful life, as I've said before, we recommend for the short term projects, detailed investigation is done on those to confirm, to confirm those remaining useful life. Asset unit costs, quantities and the current replacement value. This affects the dollar amount. So the, the remaining useful life and the estimated useful life affects the timing of the work in the forecast. The replacement cost affects the dollar value. So again, for the short term project, So again, for the short term projects, having investigated, you know, investing in the investigation, detailed investigation to check out the useful life, remaining useful life for those assets, but also to get more detail to be able to come up with a site specific replacement costs will help you. You can by investing in that small subset of detailed investigation, the findings from that, you can pro rata over the rest of your portfolio. Implementation of the life cycle strategies. As I said, there's a number of preventive maintenance measures that you can do in order to make sure that the assets reach their expected lifespan. There are also intermediate interventions that you can do, treatments to extend the lifespan beyond what you would normally expect of the assets. So when you're doing the detailed review of the asset management plan, look at those life cycle strategies. Because these things need to be implemented and done in order to postpone that capital investment. Always cost benefit risk needs to be evaluated here. The cost of doing the preventative maintenance measure versus the amount of extra life you might be able to get out of those assets is is the balance that you need to do. There's no point in spending more money on preventive maintenance measure than you're going to save by extending the life of the asset. And obviously sufficient funds for the appropriate preventive maintenance measures need need to be provided for. So looking now at the major projects and the priorities. The short term renewal forecast, you'll see it as six years because it includes the immediate year. These are the assets that are indicated as being either in very poor condition or they are overdue for replacement according to their expected lifespan. Now, that is a theoretical overdue. Obviously, they are still in working order. So they put in that year one. These are ones that need to be investigated, particularly the year one, two, and three on this graph. The projects that are in those years, they should be investigated and the findings from that investigation can be applied to the rest of the assets to increase the accuracy of your timing for the work and and replacement costs. So what's in in here in this short term forecast here is the wastewater lift stations. The components of the wastewater treatment plant, the Bridge Street Pump House, electrical and process equipment at at the treatment plant, some water hydrants and water valves, the coatings for the water tower. And the water booster station is is rated in poor condition and needs some work. The bridges, we have the Egan Creek. And but outside of this five year term is the Station Street Bridge. Now, this is an example of of assets that you cannot allow to run to fail. You know, it would be devastating to the community and potentially a cause, you know, serious harm could be fatal if you allowed that bridge to run to fail. So it's it's looking at twenty around 2036 as being when it will need replacement. And it's a lot of money. It's 22.3 million dollars to replace that. So you need this time, you need to know now about that so that you can start planning a strategy for how will you go about replacing that bridge and how will you go about funding it? Because even, you know, we will be obviously planning to get grant funding for it, but there's still a component of that grant funding that you will need to raise from the community's point of view. And there is a steady amount of road reconstruction work required almost every year over the next five years. We look at it here. As I say, the Egan Creek Bridge now, the values here, the replacement values here are all inclusive values. So these are all inclusive of your design and engineering, your construction supervision, your administration overheads, and so on. So these are all inclusive values. They are not. They are not your just your tender price. Okay, it's the total cost to your community for it. So that but again, detailed investigation of this will be able to give you a more accurate figure for planning purposes. Station Street Bridge is identified as needing $300,000 worth of rehabilitation work in the next couple of years. And as I say, we cannot lose folks, lose sight of the fact that 2036, potentially, there's 2.3 million dollars worth of replacement. The water tower coatings, 2025, 1.25 million dollars inside and out of the water tower coatings. Also, you've got to strategize for this because of the disruption to the service that doing those coatings will involve. Hydrants and valves, $700,000 worth of these are indicated as overdue theoretically, according to their theoretical lifespan. As I say, they're still working, they're still in in place. Don't necessarily know the valves. I don't know when the valves will last exercise. So I do not know whether any of the shafts on the valves may be may be broken or may break that when they go to X, turn them on or but they need to be reviewed because, for example, the hydrants, if we can get another five years out of the hydrants, then we can apply that to all the hydrants and spread out, you know, push that investment cost out a little bit to reduce our per annum average. $350,000 or 2.4 million in lift station components. We have about 30% of lift station components are in a poor or very poor condition. We've got $350,000 worth of component replacements for the wastewater treatment plant. Now bear in mind that this does not include costs for upgrades. And here again is another good reason for having this asset management information because looking at the upgrades, you can compare assets that may be near the end of their life. You may be able to do some interim treatments, little fixes to get them to last a little longer so that you then replacement replace them with with new with bigger assets as part of the upgrade rather than replacing them with new assets now and in a short period of time. You know, doing abandoning those for for the upgraded assets. And roads in stormwater, there's nearly $5 million worth of work over the short term, which averages out at about $700,000 average per annum. You can see here the average per annum expenditure for each asset group, so about a million dollars a year for roads. 70,000 a year for bridges, but bear in mind, the bridges are very old and you've not been putting aside money for them since they were first installed. So going forward, you know, we have a big lift to try and get the money for these replacements. Hopefully, we will be successful in getting grant applications to support that. Then there's 700,000 for water per year and 600,000 for wastewater per year. Adding up to your 2.4 million dollars a year on average to be able to replace as and when needed, that 84 and a half million dollars worth of assets that you own. So again, just for context, this is a look, and I'm sorry if the numbers are too small, but this is the history from 2016 to 2020. And it shows that you've been building your reserves up and you've been reducing your debt. So absolutely, you are trending in the right direction. The issue now is that, but is it enough? Is it enough to be sustainable? Is it enough for the demands of the next 25 years? This will rely answering that question will rely on the input from that detailed investigation of those short term assets to see how much we can reduce the per annum average and doing the strategies for the likes of the Station Street Bridge. And an assessment of which of these replacements in the in the program can be loan funded? And which and and what would you what would your contribution be in order to get that grant funding? Sorry, which which can be grant funded? And what would your component of that expenditure be? And because there is a limitation to what you can loan fund. You know, we're looking at, you know, these assets are, you know, many of them are over halfway through their lifespan. So the high level investigation is is very necessary. We need to focus on that subset of assets to do the the detail, to confirm the failure, the priority and the cost. That will inform the council for setting reserve contribution levels and to understand the physical risk to the services and the financial risk to the community. So let's just go over some of the key recommendations and conclusions. You have overall a good state of assets. By good, I mean, in a score of one to five, your overall average is 2.6. Okay, 54% of your assets are in that good or very good condition. But there is significant expenditure coming up on the horizon. Just a function of when the as the town grew and as it went through its development surges in in history, now those assets are coming of age. On your financial reserves, you have a limited capacity to debt fund. So there's some hard decisions coming up that that need to be made. Grants are a very real possibility for some of the the big assets that need to be replaced, but you need to position to be able to have the information to be able to apply for those grants and to have the reserves on hand for paying your contribution towards those grants. And we've talked already about investigating the one to five year candidate projects. So the next steps, obviously, you need the time to go through the asset management plan in a lot more detail and for each service area, because each service area has its own issues and demands and problems. We talked about investigating the condition of remaining life for the one to five year projects, the purpose of this being to get a greater level of confidence for you on the forecasts and hopefully to be able to reduce the per annum average, to be able to push some of this expenditure that's in the program out, you know, one, two, five years further further out to give you more time to be able to build the reserves to support those. You do need to start measuring the performance indicators for your levels of service. That is an OREG compliant, and you will have to report on the affordability of your levels of service. Preparing the information for grant applications, being able to set aside reserves to support those grant applications. And the last one is another new thing that's coming up on the horizon is asset retirement obligations, PSAB 3280. Asset retirement obligations, the legal obligation associated with retirement of tangible, long life assets where they where there is a requirement for hazardous materials or cleanup. So if you've got buildings that have asbestos components in it, lead paint on bridges, asbestos pipes in the ground, where you have things like that that would have a an add on cost when you dispose of it, there's an add on cost for the fact that they are hazardous materials and you need to dispose of them in a special way and handle them in a special way. Well, you're now required effective from April this year for reporting in in May next year what that amount of extra cost is and pro rata it over the lifespan of of those assets. Fortunately, you know, you don't have to account for it at this time, but you do have to identify what that cost is and report on it in your finances. So with that, I will open it up now to to questions.
So can we Can we go back to full screen for the participants, please?
Absolutely.
So thank you for that presentation. As I mentioned before, there's a lot here to digest and we we will take your recommendation and and chew this into the the chunks as presented to review it. I did have just a couple of questions while we're not going to dwell dwell on or delve into a lot of specifics. In early on, your presentation and also on page three of your executive summary, you mentioned here the assets rated poor and very poor condition include the Bridge Street Pump House, electrical and process equipment at the wastewater treatment plant, Egan Bridge, and the bridge located on Bridge Street East. Can anybody help me about the bridge on Bridge Street East? What bridge are we referring to? The bridge on Bridge Street East? And when you go to the OSUM report, which is later on in our thing, the bridge on Bridge Street East does not show up in the OSUM report there. So I'm a little confused on that one right there.
Okay, so I see Andrews had to duck out. Did he, Kevin?
Okay, I'm gonna leave that with you. I think that unless because the only bridge that I know on Bridge Street East was redone several years ago and is not mentioned in the OSUM report later on in the study. So if we can leave that for you to clarify.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so I say you did mention it in early on your presentation. It is showing on page three of the executive summary, but there's nothing showing in the OSUM report that reflects that particular bridge right there. Okay. The other thing, I'm staying with bridges because I think we all view those as sort of our, as you've mentioned also, the highest risk with respect to a public safety, etc.
Absolutely, yes.
On the Station Street Bridge, there is in the OSUM reports some a recommendation for a number of steps to be taken with respect to that bridge.
Yes.
One of them was One of them was, a, a couple of them being underwater work or analysis and also timber. I believe that we have done those in the last five or six years and I was wondering if those reports were reviewed as a part of your particular work here? And, and, or, or if you're recommending that they be done again, even if you have reviewed them?
If they've been done in the last five years, they will not need to be redone and.
No, maybe, it may be longer than five years. We all think yesterday was, just happened when we find out it happened before that. But I think that's important that we look at the work that's already, investigation, it's already been done with respect to that bridge. So we can get an accurate assessment of what we need to do moving forward for that particular bridge right there.
Excellent, I've made note of that.
Okay. Again, you did, you did mention with respect to our infiltration, with respect to our stormwater on our wastewater system and capacity. We have done an extensive amount of work on that. We did do camera imaging on that particular thing there and I just don't know if that was, and, and I know we don't go into great detail in the report as well. Just point of clarification if that was noted or if you were aware that that was done when you did the asset management report.
The CCTV inspection where, where the CCTV inspection had been done and there was a condition assessment based on, on that inspection that was used. We only used age-based inspections for the ones that we didn't have condition from CCTV inspections.
Okay, that, that wasn't clear. So that you had basically reviewed the data that we already had, okay?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. That's all that I have right now at this point in time that just stood out. I think, I think from our perspective, obviously, we will look at things of the highest safety nature first, which are bridges, et cetera. And councillor Miles, I see you had your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bernadette, on page twenty of the review under the short-term renewal forecast on twenty twenty-two, part of the roads takes over a million. Is, is our downtown core sort of improvement coming already factored in here anywhere? Or would these be completely new projects as of twenty twenty-two? Because there's over a million that's mentioned for roads. Or is that part of, is, is our, is our plan moving forward at this point part of that number?
I could not tell you off the top of my head, but I can get back to you on, on that. I don't, because the, yeah, it, this, we have the detail down to individual roads, but I don't have it right in front of me right now. But I'm sure that.
And I'm sure if I go and full, read the full report, I might note that in there. It's, thank you.
Anybody else any comments, knowing that we're going to be giving everybody much more time to review this document and, you know, presenting more questions? Councillor Kirby?
Just a question on, on the dollars that are referred to. We've gone through a significant inflation. I'm just wondering whether the dollar values that show up in the report were done based on current costs.
All the values in the report are in twenty twenty-one dollars. That was when the analysis was done at the end of last year. So it's all in twenty twenty-one dollars. But that, that said, I'm sure we can update those to be twenty twenty-two dollars. It is normal for asset management that it is, that you report the dollars in terms of the current year for the decisions that have been made in the current year. And longer to, you know, longer term, including inflation and the longer-term forecasting is left to the financial people of each organization because each organization uses different indices to determine that inflation value.
Councillor Wiggins, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did. Just, just a quick question, again, on the dollars. Those are, are I assume just kind of rounded out. Does that include engineering and construction, et cetera, et cetera? Or is that just the, I guess, total replacements, what I'm thinking?
Absolutely, Wayne. They, they are rounded and they are all-inclusive. They are estimates inclusive of all engineering costs and administration overhead of the organization to supervise those contracts as well. It's probably, I would say on average, at least fifteen percent to twenty percent higher than what your construction tender cost would be.
Thank you.
So as we mentioned, we have a lot more work to do delving through this. So just before we move on here, is there any, anybody else have anything else to say at this point in time? Okay, thank you. So we have a couple of resolutions. The first one, it says be resolved, the committee to hold this hereby receive the town of Bancroft municipal asset management plan as presented by WSP. Could I have a mover and a seconder on that, please? Councillor Miles moves, Deputy Mayor Mullet seconds, all in favor. Thank you, thank you, pass. The second resolution, be resolved, the committee to hold this hereby recommend the council by bylaw, the town of Bancroft, Bancroft Municipal Asset Management Plan is presented. I'd like to defer that because we had a couple of points of clarification that we've asked to come back on. So when we get those, we can do that also with our particular work. Just for members of committee council here, you'll notice that the, I, in the section that follows, business A, B, C, D and E dealt with individual portions, detailed portions or that probably went into the development of this plan. We will also probably be deferring those and looking at those in conjunction with, when we review the plan itself. So having said all of that, I would like to thank you for your presentation today and obviously we will have lots more to say regarding this.
You're very welcome.
Okay, members, I just, as I mentioned there, I think when we go to under business, Amber, where are you? I can't find you. There you are. We want to defer all these items, so I have to go through and to do them individually?
Yes, please.
Okay, oh, you wouldn't make me do that. Do I have to? Okay, so item A, hydrant flow test results summary. Could I have a motion to defer that, please? Deputy Mayor, councillor Wiggins, all in favor? Thank you. Item B, Bancroft Water and Wastewater Facilities Condition Assessment. Mover and seconder to defer that as well, please. Councillor Tracy McGivern, councillor Miles, all in favor, please? Thank you. Item C, Culver Inspection Summary, August twenty twenty-one. Motion to defer that as well, please? Councillor Kirby, councillor Wiggins, all in favor, please? Thank you, pass. Item D, Roads Need Assessment Database, motion to defer that item as well, please? Councillor Wiggins and Deputy Mayor, all in favor, please? Thank you. And item E, Town of Bancroft OSUM Report, which deals with the bridges. A motion to defer that as well, please? Deputy Mayor and councillor Miles, all in favor? So pass, thank you. So I said it would make sense to look as we go through the plan itself when we've all had time to read it and to then look at these items to correlate the two because these detailed plans were obviously the basis for the asset management plan itself. And I think most of these date back to May of last year, I do believe, et cetera. Just one item there, I did not, and correct me if I'm wrong, any staff member, please? When looking at any of the bridge information, especially with respect to the Station Street Bridge, I did not see any recommendations with respect to limiting or curtailing traffic. Wonder if any members of staff comment on that? Was there anything in there? I didn't see it.
I didn't see it either.
Yeah, no, I don't remember. The only time they talked about curtailing traffic was if you were going to be doing work. That they, there was, at least as far as I got into this, because I honestly have not read absolutely all of it. But I did get through a good chunk of the bridges section and I did not recall reading anywhere that we should be diverting traffic at this time.
Okay, Perry?
You have a comment? Good afternoon, everyone. Yes, there was a, an individual assessment as expressed by our council. I'm sorry, I'm not sure whether it was two or three or four years ago and it was through an RFP process to have a condition rating done on the Station Street Bridge. And it was done by dual engineering. So our treasurer and myself are reviewing that document to see what is pertinent to, to make sure that we follow up with, with a proper recommendation there. So it may have been missed by WSP.
Okay, so I, I see nothing to tell us to take immediate action with respect to banning truck traffic, et cetera, on that bridge?
No, Mr. Mayor, I believe the, there was something to do with a five-year plan on it. But as everyone can see, it's the bridge deck and the sidewalks are of the major concern. But I do believe that the, we had hydrology tests done there. I believe that we had assessment of the, the embankments themselves. And I believe that they were pretty decent repair. But I think a lot of it is to do with the actual deck itself. Something like the one on Bridge Street that is, was deteriorating.
Okay, Wayne, you had your hand up, did you have a comment?
Perry answered it. I was just gonna, I'm into the dual report.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I do recall that being done and I thought it came back as not, not as bad as we thought. But anyway, we, we'll need to review that again. Councillor Kirby, do you have a question?
Yes, I just wanted to know whether or not WSP submitted hard copies. It would be easier to analyze a hard copy for me anyway.
Right, I, I'm sure we can make hard copies available to anybody who would like one.
Well, I sure would like one because it's mind-boggling trying to follow there, so.
Yeah, I would too, if you don't mind.
Okay.
We'll make hard copies for council.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Miles does not want one, she wants to save a tree or two.
Along with, with the report, it might be nice to have a hard, other documents that they use so we can match them up when we're doing an analysis of it.
Yeah, okay. Okay, great. I agree, okay. Okay, so moving on, item seven, minutes of previous session, be resolved that the committee to hold this hereby approved with the minutes of the committee, the whole meeting held on April twenty-six, twenty twenty-two as presented. Could I have a mover and a seconder, please? Councillor Wiggins moves, seconded by councillor Miles. Any comments or questions on those? Seeing that all in favor, please? So pass. Item eight, unfinished business. I believe this came from our council meeting last week or two weeks ago, whenever it was. Item A, donations apart bench hill and ball field, be resolved, the committee whole recommended council denied a donation request from Birds Creek Minor Ball for their request of five sixty-five to use the baseball field for the full season. Could I have a mover and a seconder, please? Put this on the floor. Councillor Kirby and seconded by Deputy Mayor. I believe there was a couple of questions that were asked when this was posed and I'm not sure if anybody remembers what those were or if we've had time to, to look into those.
I think one of the questions was how many participants actually were residents of Bancroft as compared to outside Bancroft? And the other one was, do they pay rental in, I'll say Hastings Highlands? And are they subsided? I think that was a couple of questions.
Right. Andre, I see you come on screen. Are you gonna take a stab at this?
I have some answers. So with regard to Birds Creek Minor Ball, it's the only regional youth ball league. So youth from across the region participate in that. So it's Birds Creek, it's Co-Hill, it's Menus, it's Bancroft, it's the whole area. And this year, I believe the number was over, way too many children to be able to play on the fields in Hastings Highlands. I was gonna say hundreds, but I'm not sure, so I won't. They, they have too many children than places. So to ensure that all of the children get to play, they need use of an extra space and that's why they've asked for our ball diamond. Each child pays a registration fee of twenty-five dollars, which includes their team t-shirt. So they, they pay their twenty-five dollars and they're supplied with their ball shirt out of the proceeds of that twenty-five dollars. So the revenue is very small, if any, for the minor ball committee.
So do we charge others for use of the baseball fields?
The Monday night ladies league or mixed league does rent the field and pay an annual rental fee for their use.
And that's it?
That's the only other person we have using the ball field right now.
Okay, okay, so I remember from our meeting, councillor Wiggins, you had some comments, concerns with respect to the post-COVID world and et cetera, et cetera. I don't know if you wanted to reiterate them again? You're muted.
Thank you. I, I said, I'm just gonna, we're trying to get a phone note and going and whatever and being locked up. The question is, do you know if they rent? The other question was, do they rent in Hastings Highlands or is that contributed? That, that's the one question. But yeah, it's idea is to try and get more people in, the children, keep them off the streets, keep them out of, if we can keep them in sports, I think it's a great thing. So I'm not just sure what the financial implications were, but it's not a lot, big lot of dollars. But, and I don't think there's any lights involved or whatever. It's just maybe we're gonna cut the grass anyway, so maybe a little bit of maintenance, but not much. But anyway.
Councillor Tracy?
I, I really think we should let them use it for free. It's our kids, it's our community and we need to get them out doing things in a structured environment. And I think that we should absolutely let them use it for free, for sure.
So I have a suggestion here. My suggestion is, is that, you know, we have to be consistent, but we still have money left in our community. Don't, what's our, that called, our community donations fund or, or? What's, what's the right word I'm looking for here?
Yeah, the community support fund, I believe.
Yes, so I know this is just switching things around, but I think to be consistent, why don't we look at having them request and grant the money to come from that and then let them pay for the, the ball diamond? It, it all works out to be the same, but it's, at least we're being consistent on our policy of charging for the ball diamond in that respect. So if anybody agrees with that and would like to, to make that motion, I think that might satisfy both ends of that concern. Okay, before we do that, I think we have to handle this motion here. So if we're gonna, if some, what we should do is vote to accept this motion and then we'll put forth another motion with respect to using the, the community, whatever it is, donation fund, et cetera. Okay, so that would be my recommendation. So all in favor of passing the resolution, please raise your hands. I need you to raise your hand so we can give them the money the other way. Okay, so now councillor Tracy McGivern, would you like to make the motion that we grant them the five hundred and sixty-five dollars through the other, the fund that we have for community donations?
Sure, but do we, do they have to apply for that? There's a timeframe, this one is, is dated June.
We're gonna handle this, we're gonna, we'll handle this internally, okay?
Okay.
Do that and then, because then this, and then councillor second. And then, because then this, and then counsel, seconded by Counselor Wiggins. That way, they still have to follow the other requirements, whether there's insurance requirements or those sorts of things, et cetera. So, okay, yes, did you, are you voting or are you asking a question?
Well, I'm asking a question, just Wayne's comment, like, are they getting Hastings Highlands for free? Like, are they paying to be at Birds Creek and not with us? And if, if they're getting that free, well, then fine, I understand, we can do it through all this policy googly-gop, that's fine. But if they're not, if they're getting that, if they're paying there and not paying us, how's that fair? So I can't believe that we had this much conversation, we're $565, and just blew off $84 million worth of conversation until next meeting. But it seems so crazy. So I don't, I don't know, just maybe if we know the answer to that question, it would be helpful.
I don't think it's, unless you've got an answer right now, and which Andre doesn't. As you say, let's get rid of this item and treat it this way and move on with life. We still have money left in that particular area there, and it is Bancroft kids that are using it as well. So, okay.
And this is the same process that we used for the two we approved last month.
Right, okay, okay, all in favor? That's okay. So that way, they still have to go through the normal channels to, you know, to do it and dot the boxes, et cetera, that are there, okay? Now, we're gonna do this all over again. We've got, be resolved, the committee whole recommend a council denies the, wait a minute, request of donation, denies a donation, okay, request from Bancroft Minor Football for the request of 226 to use a baseball field for June 4th to 5th of 2022. Could I have a mover and a second or to put this on the table, please? Counselor Wiggins, Counselor Kirby? I don't know where you were, do you have any more information on this one?
A little bit more, yeah. So this is not the youth playing. This is an open call for ball tournament teams as a fundraiser for the football, the junior football team. So this is adults who are coming out for the weekend to play in a ball tournament in support of the football team. Each team pays a registration fee, I believe it was $400 per team to play. And they expect to have multiple teams in the tournament. And the money raised helps to offset the cost of having the football team. Our transportation costs to get to games in Babel and South, southern parts of Hastings County are higher than those folks who live in those areas, so it offsets some busing costs and stuff.
So I'm gathering this is a baseball tournament they're gonna be putting on.
Baseball tournament that the football league is hosting as a fundraiser.
Okay, because that was one of the questions that came up last time. You know, are they playing football on a baseball field? So, okay, so we've answered that, okay? Okay, comments on this one now, please, from whoever? Tracy?
I'd like to see the same thing happen for this that happened with the above item.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
I agree with Tracy, Counselor McGivern, it's, they're trying to, we're gonna have to keep the football team going. So for $60,000, I think it will with it and show our support.
Okay. Okay, so again, we need to vote in favor of turning down this request. And then we will follow up with another motion. So all in favor of accepting the recommendation? Good, accept it. Now, if somebody would like to make a motion similar to the one we did last one, Deputy Mayor, seconded by Counselor McGivern, which will be to, basically to fit this in within the community, our community donation section, et cetera. All in favor there, please? So pass, thank you. Okay. Next, item B, we have a number of items that were on the consent agenda from our council meeting. And we will, that were asked to be pulled, so we will start with item B, AMO, More Homes for Everyone Plan, Non-Residential Speculation Tax and De-Elimination for Volunteer Police Record Check. Be resolved that committee to hold is hereby received, deferred item C from consent agenda, agenda, May 11, 2022, for discussion purposes. Could I have a mover and a second or please? Counselor Kirby and seconded by Counselor Miles. So comments or questions on this AMO document? Okay.
I have it.
Go ahead, Counselor Kirby.
I just wanted, I just tried, I did a little bit of browsing through after this AMO comment. And I see that, in fact, the community housing renewal strategy that the Ontario government has, has three principal outcomes they're looking for, to protect, expand, supply, provide new opportunities, streamline and simplify the system. And with what's supposed to be a beneficial outcome. So I guess our, our goal would be to try and make sure that, in fact, whoever becomes the next government, in fact, adheres to that policy to try and bring forward those conditions. And the other thing I noticed in further on down, they're talking about the fact that development charges are one means of developing revenue to help sustain some of this. Although they do have exceptions where they talk about not-for-profit and low-income building that are going on, where in fact they defer the benefit, the development charges for a reasonable length of time to make it more incentive for the development. That's just a little background that I thought, but mainly I think it's the fact that we're going to have to stay hard on the provincial government.
So what I took out of this, not just this document, but when this first was announced, my take on it was, at the lower tier where we are, it's not really going to have an impact, except with some of the timelines that are put on zoning changes, et cetera. And there's been many follow-up documents on this that have basically pointed out the pitfalls of that, that you could result in municipalities who cannot meet the timelines because you have statutory limitations as far as how long posting of a particular thing, getting it to a hearing, and then a 20-day, of course, wait period after the fact, is that you could increase denials. It would be better for municipality to deny it, even though they could potentially agree if they had more time. So that seemed to be the major pitfall of it, and I have not heard any feedback from the province, because that was made by several organizations at that particular point there. So it, yeah, so I'm not really, in the grand scheme, except for some of those things, it doesn't affect us. I'm really not sure, you know, how it's going to help speed up housing, especially in, say, smaller area like ours. You know, we've been quite open and inviting for people to bring forth developments, plans of subdivisions, et cetera. And from my observation, most of the delays seem to be on the other side of the fence, where we're trying to get them to get moving, and for whatever reason, they don't move as quickly as we would like them to. So anyway, just my two cents worth on that. So if nobody has any other comments on that, we'll move on. So all in favor, please? Item C, HST rebate for new homes in Ontario be resolved that committee to hold is hereby received, deferred item E from consent agenda, May 11, for discussion purposes. And could I have a mover and a second or Counselor Wiggins? And Counselor Miles, anybody would like to comment on that?
I can comment if you'd like.
Sure.
I think it's a great idea to try to get back some of this HST for houses to, to encourage development and affordable for individuals. But I, I think it's gonna be tough getting any money back out of the governments with the state they're in right now with all the costs they're into, like everybody else. However, I do support the letter.
So I guess the premise of this is, when this was brought in many years ago, you could buy a house for quite a bit less money, and that you could, 450 was sort of a threshold that where if you were going above that, you were sort of more or less falling into the luxury, more of the luxury home category.
Right.
But even today, a first-time buyer of a new home, I don't know where you're gonna find a home for $450,000. So really, it's a, they're not gonna be giving back tax money really anywhere. So I think the point of this is they need to adjust this to reflect the market conditions. They can still, you know, probably get their same tax revenue, if not more, because the values have increased so much, they just need to increase this, this lower threshold number, you know, to reflect that. So Counselor Miles, have you heard any discussion on this through?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just gonna say, sort of, you know, when I wear my other hat, they definitely, this kind of a conversation is part of the platform of, not only the Ontario Real Estate Association, but the Canadian Real Estate Association is also, you know, pitching for consumers. Even the Home Savings Plan is not keeping up with the valuation of what homes are getting to, and you can still only save so much. So, yeah, we're, you know, the industry, the housing industry and the realtor industry, they're all in support of this movement with the HST being bumped up, as well as other plans that the government uses to support housing, because they've all lagged with, you know, with the valuation of property going up over the last couple of years.
Great, thank you. All in favor? So pass, thank you. Item D, Canada Day Celebration Approval Letter be resolved that committee to hold is hereby received, deferred item J from consent agenda, May 11, 2022, for discussion purposes. Could I have a mover and a second or please to put this on the table? Move, Counselor Kirby, Counselor Miles. So staff, if you wanna tell us the gist here?
Yep, so Mayor members of council, we were pleased to receive a grant in the amount of $7,000 this year to help with our Canada Day celebrations. Staff have been working at coming up with activities and plans and things to do. We have consulted with our managers based on the unknowns of the downtown at the time that we had to make arrangements for traffic and parking for fireworks and safety concerns raised the last time we had fireworks at the previous location. We have not been able to identify a location for fireworks this year, and as such, we are moving ahead with plans, which will not include a fireworks display this year. We plan to have a full day of activities in the park, both interactive and fun and adventureful, that will celebrate our wonderful country, but we, we've not been able to pull together fireworks for this year's celebration.
Thank you. I don't, even long-term, we will have to find a place. You know, we did have, we all loved it when they were right downtown, but of course, that did not meet the current regulations for, you know, things falling out of the sky and, you know, all of that type of business there. So, and with the loss of the property up by the liquor store, which of course was vacant until several years ago, that was a great location as well. So I guess we'll have to go on a longer-term hunt if we hope to can, you know, to move this forward down the road. So Counselor Wiggins?
Yeah, for safety, for sure, fireworks always have been a bit of an issue. However, I believe there is like a laser show that is, would eliminate that. So maybe in the future, not for this year, but that might be something they could look into. And I don't know what the cost of it would be, I have no idea.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all in favor, please? Thank you. Item E, Clearview Township, support Clearview Township be resolved that committee to hold hereby received, deferred item Q from consent agenda, May 11, 2022, for discussion purposes. Could I have a mover and a second on this, please? Move by. Counselor Tracy McGivern and seconded by Counselor Kirby. And this had to do with the funding support for infrastructure projects, bridge and culvert replacement in rural municipalities fairly timely, that this one would, would come here. Any, any comments on this? I think we obviously would support this because we fall into this category as well. And I'm sure when you, when everybody gets a chance to look at the detailed asset management plan, one of the things that sort of stands out in that is what we've been saying for years, and they spell it out in the plan, is how we, we are providing services for a much larger area than just our own area, and that we do have a relatively small tax base. And yes, we do need this. So all in favor, please? Pass, thank you. Item F, joint and server liability be resolved that committee to hold is hereby received, deferred item U from consent agenda, May 11, 2022, for discussion purposes. Could I have a mover and a second or please? Counselor Wiggins and seconded by Counselor Kirby? Comments from anybody? This has been kicking around for years, and it was like kicking around in every, whether it be a liberal government or a conservative government. And I have no clue why they have not addressed this as of yet. So anyway, there is some recommendations there, and I think they're all pretty straightforward. So if there's no comments or questions on that, all, oh, you have a comment?
One only comment I would have is, we gotta keep this in front of them. Sooner or later, they've got to address the situation.
Yeah, okay, thank you. All in favor? Thank you, so pass. Item G, township of, crammy, never heard of it, anyway. Bill 109, response from council be resolved that committee to hold is hereby received, deferred item X from consent agenda, May 11, 2022, for discussion purposes. And this again was on the More Homes for Everyone Act. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to read this. And what's it says here? Basically, talking about the refunding of development applications fees that result in lost revenue for staff time spent on files. Yes, so pretty well the same things we chatted about previously, you know, Counselor Wiggins?
Ami, just so everyone knows, crammy township is north of Colburn, just east of Colberg, part of Northumberland County.
Ah, okay.
I live there.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All in favor? So pass, thank you. Item H, firefighting certification be resolved that committee to hold is hereby received, deferred item AF from consent agenda, May 11, 2022, for discussion purposes. Could I have a mover and a second or please? Deputy Mayor and Counselor Wiggins? Andre, maybe, do you wanna just give us a little background? I know we've all heard about this, and the fire chief isn't here, I don't believe, oh, he is here.
He is here.
He is here, he was, sorry, he was, he moved to the very bottom of my screen and was hidden there, so.
Pat and I have spent several hours on video calls and training sessions in the last couple of months about this. He's got the meat and potatoes, more of it, and I'll, I'll let him share that with you. But in essence, the province is moving toward a system where any fire department volunteer or otherwise that acts as a fire department is going to be required to be trained as if it was a full-time, 24-hour day with full-staff complement fire department. So Chief Hoover, take it away.
Chief, before I let you speak on this, is this not deja vu? Have we not gone through this several years ago?
This is the third government that took a crack at it. The Liberals done it once, the Conservatives rescinded it, and then they brought it back forward again just prior to the election. It was adopted into regulation prior to the rip falling. So this is an enacted resolution, even though it was not supported by AMO or fully supported at the Ontario Association of Fire Chiefs level. There is provisions in it. They've modified the certification from where it used to be. Certification is not required if you're not providing hazmat, auto X, and interior. If you provide, let me correct that, if you provide hazmat, auto X, and interior attack, then you're automatically classified as full service, which would place us as full service due to the fact that we have a long-term care, hospital, multiple schools, high-rise apartments. We can't fight fire from the ground, so therefore, we're interior attack with rescue. And then we run the auto X unit for the area, and hazmat is a given based on the fact that we've got three or four propane plants in our area. We have to deal with hazmat. And hazmat is a given based on the fact that we've got three or four propane plants in our area. We have to deal with hazmat issues. So that places us automatically in full service. Whereas, uh, some other northern smaller townships, they've made provisions this time that. If you do two of the three services, then you can fall under what they call the Ontario Seals, and it's a different. Different program, it's still, there's still mandated requirements for training, but it's narrowed to the field, and it's all tied to your level of service. And your community risk assessment. So, um, so yeah, there's, there's a lot of detail into it. Um, we're in good position with, with our staff. We've got about, uh, eight or nine, uh, that need firefighter one. And then we have about eleven firefighters that need to finish firefighter two. Um, this is a staged, uh, regulation that'll. Mean over the next four years. It comes into full effect July the first, twenty twenty-three, and we have four years to complete our training. To have our firefighters at that level. And then, uh, if we start offering specialty services, then we have six years to, to complete the mandatory training for those components. So. Overall, we're in good, good speed for where we are currently with our training program. We were in better speed before COVID hit. We probably would have only had two or three. Uh, but the fact that we have members that haven't been able to take training due to COVID, uh, we're a little behind, but we have a four-year phase-in program that we can. Catch those firefighters up and any new hires. We're, uh. Like I say, we're, we're in good shape. We've done an analysis of where we are. We made good and full use of the grandfathering. There is no grandfathering provisions. With this regulation, the last two times they brought it out, it was grandfathering, which would allow us to use our previous training to, uh, get a standing. So we made the maximum of that the last time, but this time there is none, except if you run for the Ontario Seals, which we don't qualify because. We're deemed full service based on the level of our service. So, um, moving forward, we just need to plan and continue to. Train our firefighters accordingly. We've adopted the NFA, NFBA standards across the province. They're a recognized standard. And we just continue to train to that level. All our programming and training data is, is based on this. And we've been using it since two thousand and thirteen or fourteen when it came into effect. So, um, it's just. Increasing the level of firefighter safety and, um, health and safety across the province. So that everybody's playing to the same level, that you're not having, uh. People doing stuff that without proper training and putting your municipality back to the whole risk and, uh. The risk component that we talked about earlier and the fact that you can be sued every time you turn around. So. It just places us so that we have to meet those requirements and we, we, we meet them on every day based on the fact that. It's a health and safety issue, and it's a, there's inherited risks with it, but we, uh, work towards those in limiting and, and mitigating those, those costs. So.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for the, uh, Chief?
It's glad that we've got, we've got, I'm glad he's got our staff pretty well trained, so that's good.
Our biggest fight on it was that we wanted longer time, timeframes to get it phased in, and that's what AMO was still fighting for. Is the fact that why it come in effect in the middle of July and in an already set budget year. Uh, it's, it's shaved off six months, but, uh. Whereas if, you know, if you weren't up to date on, on where you were at, you would be, you'd lose six months of, of training time. It could have very well been passed. Think them into regulation in the, in January twenty twenty-three, or, yeah, in twenty-three instead of twenty twenty-two. So. They're shaving six months off of us, but we'll, uh, we'll see where that goes.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, please. So pass, thank you. Item I, Hastings Highlands Notice of Passing of a Zoning Bylaw, be resolved that Committee of the Hall is hereby received deferred item. A G from Consent Agenda, May eleven, twenty twenty-two for discussion purposes. Uh, could I have a mover and a secondary on this, please? Counselor Wiggins and seconded by, I need a hand, Counselor Kirby. So who would like to? I, I'm not sure who asked for this one or what, uh, why it was pulled. Anybody have any?
I think we just pulled everything, if I'm not mistaken.
No, we, we went through and people asked for specific ones.
Okay, I have no idea why this is here.
Andre, do you have any recollection or, um, Amber, wherever you are, where you are? People are disappearing on my screen. There they are, okay.
I, I don't recall this one.
Okay, well, I think we can just, all then, all in favor. Pass, thank you. Okay, item nine, business continued. Main Street makeover twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, uh, update. So I'll make a few comments, and then I'll see if Andre wants to make any. So, as everybody is aware, this is a rather significant project. That, uh, the costing is, you know, with the current, uh, situation, the construction industry has gone up dramatically. And at the same time, we're also trying to look at a means of mitigating the, the effects. On our downtown residents as we're moving into the peak season al- already. Um, we did have a report that came to us or some more information, and I think from, I know from that report, more questions have surfaced. Uh, and, and more clarification has been requested. So we have scheduled another meeting for. Uh, May, Monday, May is at the thirtieth, is that the date? Uh, to give staff time to, like, to clarify some of the further questions that we had at that point in time. Um, and I believe from my perspective, I think that's where we stand. And Andre, I don't know if there's something you'd like to add to that?
My mouse isn't working. Uh, no, I think that's, that's about it. Just, uh, we are, we met again for a couple hours this morning and looked at some more. Uh, figures and numbers and math and did follow-ups on a few things. Um, we have a couple really critical follow-ups still to come in. And we're, we really don't want to, um, share what we think the picture looks like until we have those con- confirmations. So that we're confident that we have all of the bits of information we need to make a really good decision.
Okay. Thank you. There is no resolution there, so we will move on from there. Item B, North Hastings Public Library, is this, it, was this, did this item remain in the agenda or am I looking at an old agenda?
I think you're looking at an old agenda. It is.
Okay, I actually just grabbed it off of Civic Web, so I'm not sure what. Okay, so it's not there? Good, then we will move on. Next thing I show is Eastern Ontario Trails Alliance, is that, okay? Donation request, uh, be resolved that Committee of the Hall is hereby recommend that Council of the Corporation of Towned Bancorp approve Eastern Ontario Trails Alliance donation request. For maintenance of trails in the amount of one thousand dollars for twenty twenty-two. Could I have a mover and a secondary, please? Counselor Wiggins. And Counselor Tracy McGivern, uh, Counselor Wiggins, would you like to s- speak on this, please?
Yes, I would. Uh, as everyone's well aware that the, uh, Eastern Trail, Trail Alliance, uh, main objective is to. Promote tourism in the area and the municipalities, uh. Involved along the trail all contribute seed money out, but that the, uh, we can turn into grant money. And the millions of dollars that it takes to run these trails, uh, it's good, it's imperative that we get the funding. The municipalities, uh, I won't list them individually, but they donate around, uh, about fifty million doll- or fifty thousand dollars. Uh, towards the community. Uh, I think it's just behooves us that we contribute. Uh, and be part of that, uh, that, that group. Uh, might add that, uh, we're, we're probably, uh, at the, the lowest at the end, but better low than not there at all. So. Actually, we might have to move up a little bit. For one thousand dollars is a nice contribution. Uh, they. Put way more than a thousand dollars into our, the trail in our area. Uh, so I, I just think, uh, we have to step up. And, uh, be there.
Thank you. I, I guess my question for the treasurer, we, we seem to keep tapping this one particular fund. I believe there's still room in our donation fund. Is that correct?
Yes, there is.
Yeah, okay, so. Any other comments or questions? All in favor, please. So pass, thank you.
Thank you.
Item D, or it's D online, but it'll be something different on yours. Citywide Software Modernization Grant Update. Be resolved that Committee of the Hall is hereby received a Citywide Software Modernization Grant Update Report for information purposes only. Could I have a mover and a secondary on this, please? Deputy Mayor, Counselor Kirby, Wendlin.
So I had promised council that I would bring back the actual quotation, um, from Citywide. So this is the quotation. Um, council has already passed that, uh, we would go with the software from Citywide. So it's just to. Show that we can do it within the grant dollars.
Any questions? All in favor? So pass, thank you. Um, item E, Tax Billing and Collection Policy be resolved that Committee of the Hall is hereby recommend that Council approve the tax billing and collection policy. As presented, could I have a mover and a secondary, please? Counselor Miles, Counselor Wiggins, uh, Wendlin.
So basically, this policy is just outlining what we are allowed to do and what we're not allowed to do. Under the Municipal Act, and it gives a good snapshot that would be published on the website for the public. To know what the procedures are and what any collection procedures we may take in the future. And also, um, within this policy and the next policy that's coming up. Um, we shouldn't be, um, collecting taxes with credit cards. Because that's basically considered discounting, which we're not allowed to do under the Municipal Act. So it's proposed that there would be a potential of thirty thousand dollars a year in savings within the operating budget. Um, by charging a convenience fee for anybody that would pay by credit card. So that would be a one point seven five percent convenience fee added on to any payment that. Um, people would want to do. So this eliminates people that are getting their points. Basically, on the whole of the tax base, um, paying for that.
So the only question I have on this, and I, I agree with this, is does the credit card agreement that we op- that we have to operate by. Allow this? I, I, for some reason, in the past, I thought there was something that did not allow that you to upcharge for the use of a credit card.
Um, so we, if it's passed by a policy, then it could be charged. Um, it's no different than charging interest on a delinquent account. Um, as long as it's clearly stated, you can. And most municipalities that do take credit cards have a convenience fee. Now we would have to. Add it manually at the counter, um, because our credit card machine does not have that feature. And on the website, we would have to clearly, um, state that any payment that you make. Um, that fee would be accounted in your payment.
Would this also be possible to be put on our tax bill as well?
Um, it. That I'm not a hundred percent sure of, because I'd have to research that, because normally it's done, um, at the time of payment. Not at the time of billing.
No, just a notify, okay, notification that.
Oh, yes, we would educate definitely and put something in the newsletter for the next, um, tax billing. And we would put something on the website as well as a notification.
But on the actual tax bill, is there, I, I don't have one in front of me. Is there terms of payment, uh?
Um, I'm not sure under the current software we have if that's a capability, but under the new software we're getting. Which I don't think will be in place by then. There can be notifications added, um, in the new software to the tax bills.
Yeah. Deputy Mayor, you had a question?
Yeah, just a one question, uh, Wendlin, uh, in the, in regards to paying by credit card. Do we have a, like, is that a sufficient number with our residents? I'm just wondering, we've been doing well collecting, collecting our taxes. Um, and so I'm just, will this be a hindrance to them?
Um, normally, um, historically, if people do pay by credit card for their taxes. It's more of a situation where, uh, they might have a lower interest credit card. Versus what we would charge as an interest fee of one and a quarter percent compounded. So it's more used by people that may be behind, that have a different, um. Uh, capability of leveraging a lower interest rate, but it seems to be. In my analysis, that it's been more of a convenience that people are paying to get points. Instead of paying by cash or check or, um, online banking, et cetera.
And it's causing us, you say it's causing us about thirty thousand dollars?
Yes, so almost, uh, over a half a percent, uh, increase to the tax base per year. So if we can eliminate that, then we can use those funds somewhere else where it's needed more.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Wiggins.
I think in some of the cases too, uh, maybe people, especially the economy today. They might be extending it by using their, their credit card rather than pay, uh, late fees on, on our tax bill. Um, I must say, I'm not in favor of that part.
Okay, so they still can use it. They just have the convenience fees as mentioned. That's what's in the report. So all in favor, accepting the report, please? One, two, three, and so pass for, okay. Uh, item F, Accounts Receivable Invoicing and Collection Policies, uh, be resolved that Committee of the Hall. That's hereby recommend that Council approve the accounts receivable invoicing collection policy as presented. Could I have a mover and a secondary, please? Move by, Counselor Tracy McGivern, Counselor Kirby, Wendlin. I'm not really sure how this differentiates from what we just did.
It's similar, um, but what this does, this is everything else but taxes. So this is if we charge somebody an accounts receivable invoice. Um, in the past, we haven't had the capability to charge interest on late accounts. So this policy will allow the town to charge penalties of one and a quarter percent. On accounts receivable other than taxes. And also, it, uh, incorporates the convenience fee. For the credit cards as well for paying any accounts receivable invoices other than taxes.
Okay, any questions? All in favor? So pass, thank you.
Thank you.
Item G, Proposed Five-Year Building Plan for Relocation Expansion and Upgrade Requirements for Public Works Buildings. And Facilities and Fire Services. Motion before is be resolved that Committee of the Hall does recommend that Council authorize development. Of a building transition plan to be carried out over the next five fiscal years to relocate the public works and buildings. And facilities departments from the current lease MTO property to the Bancroft and Dunyan Fire Station properties. With building additions and upgrades to both, uh, fire stations be included in the plan. The commencement of the proposed, uh, building plan will start at the Bancroft Fire Station in year one of the schedule. And further, that Committee of the Hall recommend that Council authorize staff to begin work on the comprehensive plan. To be presented to Council for implementation starting in twenty twenty-three. And associated costs be included for year one of the plan and the twenty twenty-three budget. And further, that Committee of the Hall recommend that Council authorize the Treasurer to allocate the funds and/or source grant opportunities. To have the required funds to complete the necessary expansions, modifications, and upgrades. Could I have a mover and a secondary, please? Counselor Wiggins and Deputy Mayor and, uh, Chief, I see you lit up there, so I'm assuming you're gonna speak on this.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, um, as part of our, uh, Buildings Bylaw Committee, uh, there was a. A had a committee set up with the Deputy Mayor and, uh, Counselor Wiggins to, uh, have a, a review of this, uh. Ongoing, uh, process that we've been dealing with, with the ORC building. We've been down, as the report details, we've been down the roads looking at various options, solutions and whatnot to find a permanent home. The Public Works and the Building Department, or Buildings and Facilities Department. Uh, we've looked at various, various options over the years, having someone else build one, buying separate property. Um, that's all detailed in the report there. Uh, the Building Committee had it. Had a long look at this and the building committee does not see this as a viable long-term solution for the operations to remain at this site. Given the six factors listed in the uh in the uh report, the vulnerability associated with the ninety-day notice to vacate. Uh, annual operating cost for old infrastructure for heating, lighting, et cetera, long-term. Uh, financial risk for maintenance cost to the building as we are on the hook under the agreement. To pay all all uh maintenance costs. So if the roof goes on that building, we're. We're investing taxpayers' dollars in a building that we don't own. Um, there's limitations on property use, uh non-ownership of property and investing, like I say, tax dollars and operational improvements. So if we want to change something. Uh, to make it better for our operations or our staff, we're we're investing money in a building that we don't own. As well as it's uh sitting on a prime real estate that could be developed in the taxable land area. So. Uh, at the direction of of our committees through uh Deputy Mayor Mullet, uh he asked to have this brought forward to Cal. That we'd look and consider at um development, a comprehensive plan. That's not saying that we're going to charge forward and build right away or do anything. It still all has to come back to council, but it's having the ability to. Sit down and focus and look at our options, what our needs are, where we need to go, how we could do it, what sort of structure. Is it a standalone building? Is it an addition? Is it a joint addition with uh with a separate building? Uh, utilizing the lands we currently have and then putting that all together in a in a comprehensive plan. In conjunction, working with the treasurer to see how and when we can fund it. Um, included in the uh report was a a four-year plan, two years for each site. Uh, that would put us in line with our uh lease being up in five years' time so that would give us a a year's worth of grace for. Delays, setbacks, uh that sort of thing, and then uh work through the costings and the breakdowns of what we could potentially build. And then from there, it would come back to the next term of council to kind of finalize and and adopt or deny. Uh, at council's discretion and then from there, put the put the wheels in motion to to find a permanent home for for parks, buildings. And uh public works inside our own operations. And utilizing green infra- infrastructure, heating, lighting, all that sort of stuff to uh to try to maximize our operational facilities and efficiencies. Uh, where we uh where we own the building. And plan for the next forty years. We've been here in the Bancroft Fire Hall for over twenty-some years already. And they've outgrown this site and we need to plan for our our future and uh have an anchored spot that we're not. Uh, out running our our public works department out of a circus tent in the backyard somewhere. So. That's kind of where we need to to draw a line in the sand. And yes, it's gonna, there's gonna be costs, but if we can through our treasurer. Uh, take a a planning approach to it through reserves and uh grants and funding opportunities. Uh, I believe it's viable and doable.
Uh, thank you, Chief. Questions or comments?
Just if I can, uh, the comment, what we're basically laying is a strategic plan here. And we'll allow our staff to break anything down going forward, a bit steps going forward. Of course, everything will have to come back to the building committee and then back through the council. And of course, it all depends on funding uh through our our treasury department. So. This is just laying out a strategic plan that we can start working towards a goal at the end. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Kirby.
I'm just curious as to whether the uh logistics and service requirements for Dunyan are more difficult than they would be in Bancroft.
I was gonna say, I was gonna let Perry Kelly answer that question. Are you there?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just leave my video off because I know it freezes me all the time. Uh, that's a great uh question, Counselor Kirby. Um, with the recent addition of uh the new truck sweeper that uh council has allowed, uh it makes. The freedom of our operations both winter and summer a lot more viable. To not necessarily be within town limits. Uh, the only caveat uh basically is our sidewalk maintenance in the wintertime. And through the uh through the building committee and Chief Hoover, we have looked at uh options for uh. Storage of that unit here in Bancroft. Um, one of the biggest concerns that Public Works has is we have no salt storage. And be it whether we have to uh get the material from a rental unit that we're using right now, we still have to travel over to that rental unit, which isn't far. Um, but it would make more common, uh more sense uh logistically to uh to run everything from one complete yard. And we could adjust our winter maintenance operations uh through recommendations and through our uh council resolution to uh. Hopefully better serve uh all of our municipality from from the one yard.
Thank you. Counselor Tracy, you had a question?
No, I was just gonna say, I think it's an excellent idea. So we have time to look into it and figure out all the logistics and then go from there. But. Yeah, I think it's great. Why rent? We can use our own space and our own buildings and add on to them. And I think that's probably the best route to go. So, good.
Thank you. Anyone else? All in favor, please? So pass. Thank you. Uh, buh 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 buh, hang on a sec here. Next, twenty twenty-four single axle truck update. Resolved community the whole is hereby recommend that council approve manager public works recommendation is outlined. In the staff report dated May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two for the upgrades to the new purchase of the twenty twenty-four single truck. Could I have a mover and a seconder, please? Counselor Wiggins, Deputy Mayor. Uh, Perry, would you like to speak on this, please?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Um, as as uh everyone was aware earlier in the season, uh we did have a. A rather significant uh uh significant accident with uh with our two thousand and eight single axle truck. And through the mitigation of our treasurer and our insurance company, um, we were awarded the replacement value of a brand-new truck. Uh, for the unfortunately, it'll be for the twenty twenty-four winter season. Um. We bring this forward uh today as a report and an ask of a a couple of uh items that were overlooked when we were specing out. The new truck for insurance uh insurance purposes. So the uh insurance company has already uh. Uh, the town has already received the check for the two hundred and eighty thousand. And there's a. Just a couple of items that would bring it up to around ten thousand over that check amount to purchase this truck. And we're just asking. Uh, for council's approval to go ahead and have these a couple of items. The one is uh, the truck was. Um, it was stacked with a one-way plow. Um, we run with two-way plows so that we can uh plow our intersections easier. Plow certain sections of the roads easier and a new system that would be um, it's a uh um. A GPS data control which controls. Uh, and it logs all of our data information plus uh plow up, plow down, sanding, um, that type of operations as well. And uh, this isn't a an impact, obviously, uh that would come into twenty-two or twenty-three budget. It would be. Expensed out in our twenty twenty-four budget process. Because unfortunately, it's gonna be a year and a half before we even receive this new truck. So that's uh, that's our, the managers ask at this point.
Thank you. Uh, questions? Uh, Counselor Kirby.
Just wondering Perry if it's gonna create problems for having one truck out of service over the coming winter.
Uh, yes, Counselor Kirby, that is gonna be a challenge for us. Um, fortunately, we do have a spare truck and we enacted that spare truck once. Uh, this vehicle was in the internet. Um, it may uh be a bit of a burden on uh some of our roads, the way we. Uh, did our winter maintenance as we uh approached the end of the winter maintenance season this year, but uh. One fortunate thing is is that council has approved the purchase of a new tandem truck. And it might be here. We're hoping it'll be here before the twenty twenty-three winter maintenance season. Um, so we'll just have to limp our way through and uh and make things work uh as best we can until uh the new vehicle. Uh, does show up here.
Counselor Wiggins, do you have your hand up?
Again, but that uh, Counselor Kirby and I are basically at the same question involved. So that's good. Contingency plant for twenty twenty-three, that's good.
Okay, anyone else? All in favor, please? So pass.
Thank you.
Uh, that that the item I, garbage collection proposed changes be resolved, committed to hold, is hereby recommend that council approve the. Proposed changes to the garbage and recycling collection program is presented by the manager of public works. Could I have a mover and a seconder, please? Move by? Counselor Wiggins, seconded by? Anybody? Uh, Counselor Miles? Okay, uh Perry, please.
Thank you. Um, this is a a further report, uh, Mr. Mayor and council to the uh. To council's wish of uh looking for uh creating incentives and efficiencies within the workplace. Um, and most definitely targeting, targeting the efficiencies of the waysite. So. With with the current uh uh prices of fuel increases uh due to COVID, um, it's the managers asked if. Uh, we would like to uh approach the idea of doing um. A bi-weekly in collection of garbage and our recycling within the municipality. There is a number of uh positive reasons uh for doing the uh new proposed uh garbage and uh recycling collection proposal. Uh, increased expense of our fuel is shown in the chart below. We're running at about a hundred and fifty dollars per day per truck. So we're running about. Three hundred dollars per day. So um, it's quite a huge expense to the municipality. And uh it will be a burden to the operating budget uh not seeing through the budget process, the the unforeseen. Rise in the uh in the cost of the fuel. The other concern is the increased health and safety of our current staff. Um, with the uh with the uh. The newer homes and the and the increase in the uh materials, there is uh an extra burden on our staff for the amount of uh. Uh, waste and recycling that's out there. Recycling is a good thing because that's uh more of a revenue generator for us, but we still have to collect it all. Uh, the increased wear and tear on our age of municipal collection trucks. Uh, currently, we run a two thousand and nine for garbage and a two thousand and ten for recycling. Uh, they do have a bit of a a bit of a break each week so that we can keep up on the maintenance of them. But as the age, they do uh require more more attention as well. And the increased concerns of our carbon footprint using the two vehicles to complete our service. With the thought process that uh our wayside is open um. Monday mornings, Thursday mornings, Friday mornings, all-day Saturdays and all-day Sundays uh for the use of our uh ratepayers as well. So in the uh uh current schedule that we have, I won't go through it, um, but you can see as you've read through the report. It shows that uh what we would do is even weeks and odd weeks. It's kind of the same thing as we do for our billing cycles with our uh. Water wastewater, our water bills. So currently, we would still do commercial collection um. With the uh garbage truck on Mondays. Um, we can use the existing vehicles that we have. We could park one of the two vehicles. Keep it as a spare and therefore we would save the minimum of a hundred and fifty dollars a day in fuel. And then even weeks, we would do uh Dungannon, which is the normal Tuesday uh garbage. And then we would. On Wednesday, instead of doing Bancroft residential garbage, we would do Dungannon res- uh residential uh uh recycling. And then same on odd weeks. So our proponents would still have a garbage collection and recycling collection. But it would be on a bi-weekly basis. Um, and then uh as usual, our Thursday is our commercial garbage collection. And uh commercial uh collection of recycling. That day, we would have to use two trucks with two staff. And then Fridays, we would do truck maintenance and repairs on both of the vehicles. So with these proposed changes, the residential collection would be changed from weekly uh pickup to bi-weekly pickup. And this would allow for uh. Multi-Lo feces, uh full sit fuel savings of running two trucks for four days per week. No downtime as we would have a spare truck, uh health and safety of our staff. We could even look at sometimes possibly running with one staff person that would uh still run this truck, but we would. Want to have uh the other staff person there to uh uh spare them off from time to time as well. The commercial users now are currently uh have the option uh and do use our service of buying a ninety-five gallon tote with a lid on it on wheels. Uh, from the town for their collection purposes. Um, the town could offer that to the same uh arrangements to our residential users. Uh, that would have concerns of storing waste for uh bi-weekly collection. Well, with the introduction of the uh um. The grinder, sorry, I can't, the food processors, the food recyclers, um, there wouldn't be a whole lot of waste that would be stored that would be. Um, you know, detrimental to anyone if they had to store it for an extra week anyways and go to the bi-weekly collection. The financial implications, as we have spoken to and as our treasurer has uh confirmed, is that uh. Total for the garbage truck from January first to April fifteenth to date, we're looking at about seven thousand dollars. Ballpark for each vehicle. So if you take those numbers and you divide it out, it's it's a it's a huge savings for. For our ratepayers and we would still be providing um. Not the same level of service, but we would still be providing that service uh to our uh to our users. And moving to bi-weekly collection and recycling collection will result in a savings to the municipality of approximately twenty thousand dollars per year. Based on fuel costs to date and calculating the annual fuel usage. Reducing the number of waste vehicle trips on our roads each week by half. We would be a small step forward in reducing our carbon footprint. And the health and safety of our staff will be improving by sharing the workload, spotting each of the other driver. One could drive and one could throw. And just another point of mention that isn't in this report is that uh town of Bancroft, and I know we don't like doing any comparables, but. Town of Bancroft is the only municipality other than Highlands East. So there's nobody in in our Hastings County area unless you get south of Tudor Cachelle. That uh facilitates um any type of garbage collection or recycling collection for that matter. We provide a a very thorough service. Um, with garbage and recycling collection, plus we have uh approximately twenty-nine hours per week. That the the wayside is open for all of our users to use a at their discretion as well. So that's the end of my report. Any uh any questions or concerns?
So I I got a few questions, uh Perry. So number one, um, with respect to the garbage bi-weekly. Um, we talked about that for years. I personally am fine with that, but I think it would be when we go out to promote this, it would be a great. Opportunity to promote the recyclers again. Uh, that you know, you. You mentioned in your presentation there about the use of the recyclers and, you know, not having rotting material sitting in your garbage can for two weeks. So I think. Uh, as we go out to publicize this, uh we should in tandem be uh promoting the recyclers as well. Uh, the only thing I've got a slight concern with is on the recycling end because. We are promoting people uh by going, by doing the bi-weekly garbage. I I would hope that that would naturally try to get people to uh. You know, sort a little bit more and move stuff to recycling. I don't know about everybody else, but I know personally. I'm jam-full of recycling uh on two bins every single week. So we would have to either. Have some bigger bins or I think in a perfect world, it would have been nice to still be able to do recycling every week. Um. So that I guess my, so that would be my main concern is on the recycling end. Because as I say, by reducing the garbage, you might promote more recycling. And as it is now, uh I think a lot of people, I just see on my street, their bins are full uh as it is. So. I think we need to look and see how we would handle that. Counselor Wiggins, you have a comment?
Those are my comments too. Uh, a lot of it is is the fact that our recycle bins are full now. Uh, so we'd either, I think, look at an option, maybe be be back to clear plastic bags or or the blue bag, which I believe was an issue. Or or more more recycling. Uh, I I think uh also at this time is it would be another. Uh, another opportunity to promote our uh our backyard composters. And also our food, food uh little processors that we've uh got in the in the community. So I think it all tie into one another. I think it's a good idea. Um, to 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 try to eliminate and go bi-weekly, but we have to allow them the. Uh, we have to allow them to uh to uh have containers.
Uh, Counselor Miles.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would be in favor of this program if we were doing it as a trial run or something that you could. that you could come back and really, I understand we could save fuel, that completely makes sense to me, but I would have the same concern as what the mayor just mentioned. I think that stuff is going to pile up and quite frankly, I think you're trying to force me to take my own garbage to the dump. When you make that comment that the dump is open for all those hours during the week, if I'm a constituent, I might feel like that's really what you're saying to me is take your own garbage to the dump. And yet, you know, I, it is a service we provide. So I, I'm, I'm not opposed to this. I'm, I'm just, I want to know for sure that it's going to be successful and I envision garbage piling up everywhere or sitting in my driveway longer or sitting in my bin longer or recycle piling up. You know, and again, personally I go to the dump. I don't, I, I don't like putting my garbage out at the end of the street. I'm the last house and it, it always seems to get disrupted. So I just go to the dump. I don't care, but I think other constituents might have some issue with that. So I would support this if I thought in three months you came back to me and said, here's exactly what I can prove and we haven't had a pileup of garbage. That's, that's all.
So Perry, I, I think the recycling, I think is the big concern here. Can we get bigger bins? Like, I don't think people want to have four bins. They just don't have room for them. Can we get bigger bins or how could we handle the recycling? Because we want people to divert more away from garbage into recycling. We don't want to be punitive on the re, the recycling part. So what are, what are your thoughts on that?
Yes. First of all, if you don't mind, Mr Mayor, I'd like to answer councillor Miles' concern about we're trying to force people to go to the wayside. I, I wasn't trying to slight that at all. I was saying that we're basically supplying a double service to, to all of our users. Yes, I agree, we should still do our curbside collection. I think that is very important for our users. What I'm also saying too is that if there are concerns from some of our users for that purpose at all, then we're not trying to shut them out and say that they, that they don't have any other options, I guess, because other municipalities in the past have done the exact same thing. They've canceled all of their collection services and, and basically done that forced everybody to go to the, to the waysite. We're not about that at the moment, nor we probably will not be in the future. But my concern is, is to make sure that we just try to create efficiencies and be more self-sustainable as a municipality is what I'm saying. And Mr Mayor, to your comment, I've thought about that quite a bit. We do have the option of the roll-off totes. They are a bit expensive, but one or two roll-off totes are about a hundred dollars a piece. We also do have roll-off or sorry, bins that we can get that are a bigger volume than we have now. And then the other thing that we could do too is I know that we've been really pushing to stay away from the bags because the bags are, in our mind, we get less revenue if the product is showing up at our waysite and when we take it to the MRF in bags too. So we wouldn't be opposed to probably using bags because we would have two staff on, on the vehicle, then they could dump those bags so that we could still get the best value for, for our funds. And I like the idea of bags. I wish there was a different way that we could just use bags all the time because it's a lot cleaner process, especially for our constituents. You know, you don't put a recycle bin out and you set something right up on top and hoping it'll stay there and the wind blows it off. And you know, so we're trying to keep it so that it's clean and sustainable for us as well too. So this is the idea of bringing this report forward. We like to think outside the box and, and we enjoy having council's input so that we can either move forward with this or look into it a little bit further, but.
So Perry, I'm personally, personally not in favor of bags. They're a plastic and we're trying to reduce plastics. You know, we're getting the grocery stores to get off plastics, et cetera. So I think it, maybe there's a better type of bin out there. You know, I know what you're saying, you know, the, the wind comes and takes the existing ones as it is, the, the stuff on it. But I think for this to be successful and acceptable, we want to promote and increase recycling. So I think, I think we need to ask you to go back and, and have a, a look at this from the recycling end and to see what you might be able to do because I don't think the current bin, the bins that we use now are going to suffice for two weeks for, for a lot of people, et cetera. The one other question I have, Perry, I just want to understand on your chart here, you show Monday commercial and Thursday commercial. What's the difference between those two?
The only difference is that we used to do, we used to only do commercial on Mondays and Fridays. So we do some commercial collection of garbage with the bigger users on, on Thursdays now as well, just to alleviate the, the stress of the, of the bigger commercial users. We, we had initially taken the Friday commercial collection right out and then we found that there were a few of the, of the bigger users that we still needed attention and collection on Thursdays as well.
So how long have we been doing the Monday commercials? Has that been there forever?
Yes, it has been, Mr Mayor. It's been there forever. And, and the other commercial collection too is morsel of the cardboard. We do cardboard collection on Thursdays as well, which I just noticed isn't noted in here. So it, it may very well be, we do, the bulk of it is that you see all kinds of cardboard all over town on, on Thursdays. That's part of the cardboard and the garbage portion there too.
So I, I've had some comments from, from folks with respect to the Monday commercial because that would mean they'd have to put it out Sunday night and their business is closed on Sunday, on Sundays. How, how are we handling that?
So how we're, we're handling that on an individual basis and, and we have our, our admin staff here. If there's a concern with somebody that they're having issues or trouble putting the material out on a, a Sunday evening, then that's why we've opted for the Thursday. And honestly, it's working quite seamlessly. So if you know of anybody that is having any concerns in that regard, we most definitely don't mind helping out and moving that to the, they could put it out Wednesday night for a Thursday pickup.
Okay. Anybody else with comments? So my only suggestion, oh, go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
My only comment is I, I'm in favor of the, the, you know, bi-weekly pickup. But I like to hear it work. So with, with Bell's comment about, you know, trying it for the two, three months, here we go. I, I do find that recycling overwhelming sometimes. You just, you just, you wonder where it all comes from. But if we're going to try that through the summer, you, you, you know, some people may have, have problem with, with animals as well. We don't know that. So then, so the test time, I, you know, I, I'd be in favor of the test time, not in favor of plastic bag. Thanks.
I, I would like to, if it's council's wish, I would like to look at the recycling end of this a little bit further before we go into some type of a pilot project because the, if we get our, our constituents used to something and then we go back to a weekly collection, then it's really, you know, kind of doing bad after good. So I think in, in my personal experience, if we could nail down the concerns that we have here today, come back to our committee with a, a more formal approach and answering the questions and concerns that you have, that would be my preferred approach.
So Amber, where are you? I lost you, there you are. So if we want to defer this to allow the manager of public works to come back to get information, sorry, I forget what I have to do here, just to get the mover and the second or to agree to a deferral?
Yeah, so we have councillor Wiggins and councillor Miles.
Okay, I'll do that in one second, but I see councillor, just as I was about to speak, I saw councillor Kirby raise his hand up, so I, I entertain your question first, councillor Kirby.
Okay, I just, I'm sort of following along councillor Miles's concern. There's a core area in downtown that in fact has already got some problems with build-up. You, with two weeks, I think there needs to be good education to make sure that in fact, we don't get into a messier looking downtown at a crucial time when we're actually implementing it.
Yeah, right. Thank you. So councillor Wiggins and councillor Miles, you're okay with the deferral?
I am, just one, one thing I would like to make a suggestion. If we get larger tote boxes, which I think we're going to need or, or I would like them with the lids on, a flappable lid or something to stop the recycle from blowing all over the neighborhood.
Okay, so I think, I think Perry will come back to us with some more information on options. Okay, all in favor for the deferral then? So pass, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Item J, public works update resolved. The committee to hold is hereby receive the public works update for information purposes. Could I have a mover and a second or please? Councillor Miles, councillor Kirby, Perry?
Thank you once again. I won't go through every line item of detail here, just, this is something that I've attacked, I have tasked our admin assistant to, to give to me monthly so that we can just kind of keep our committee apprised of, of the maintenance that we're doing and so on and so forth. So one of the things that I am very happy about, and I'd sent councillor an email last week, was the, that neat little truck that we're running around town now doing up our street sweeping and that is a cool little machine. It, it's working very well. We have three operators trained on it. The salesman was here for a full day last week and it's out and about and it'll be out eight hours a day now for quite a, quite a bit of period of time, doing in and around the link and then starting on the streets in town and then work north to south. So we're excited to have that vehicle in operation. As far as everything else is concerned, we're keeping our head above water here and we've got our, getting our roads graded now for calcium, calcium application, depending on the rain and the weather in the next few weeks and pothole repairs and other repairs done by our, our friends from Bell Canada. That's, we're not doing any of those repairs, but we are going around. Our lead hand is making sure that he makes note of where the repairs are and the repairs are being completed by Bell Canada. And there was only one major repair that I've got some quotes done to have Gulfview subdivision having those repaired as well. But everything's moving along quite nicely. The spring weather is drying up nice. We're getting rid of the sand. We're doing dust control mitigation and we'll roll right into the summer. Oh, the other point of note too is that we have signed an MOU with our unionized staff and we have started to do line painting as, as we see necessary right now too as well. So I'm very pleased with our progress to date.
Thank you. Any questions for Perry? Wayne?
Just wondering Perry, have you been in touch with Bell Canada regarding the construction they did in the winter? I know there's holes in gravel and fill where they dug in the wintertime and that has to be addressed. And now everybody's out cutting their lawns and whatever, it should have been done prior, but we have to lean on them to get that done yesterday. Have you been in touch with them?
Yes, councillor Wiggins, that says, they alluded to a few minutes ago that our lead hand has made document of all those repairs and we're in touch with Bell Canada and they have hired a local landscape contractor to do the repairs. So we're not going to stop until they make sure they have all the repairs necessarily
Okay, thank you. All in favor of accepting your report? Thank you. Pass. Item 10 of your business, seeing none, next meeting date, committee to hold is June 28th at 3:00 PM. Could I have a motion to adjourn please? Councillor Wiggins, thank you. And we will take five minutes and we have a, hopefully a somewhat quick council meeting. So five minutes, everybody, thank you. Five minutes, everybody. Thank you. I guess we're just waiting for Charles. Okay, he's back. Are we live streaming?
We are.
Am I ready?
Yep, you're ready.
Oh, okay. I I was asking, are we going to live? Yes, and yes, we are ready to go. Okay, so call the. Meeting of Council order, please. Approval of the agenda, be resolved, the council corporation of town of bankrupt is hereby approved of the open session agenda dated May twenty fourth, twenty twenty two as presented. Could I have a mover and a second or please? Move by Deputy Mayor, Second of my Counselor Kirby, all in favor, please. Hands are up. Thank you. Declaration you can interest in nature thereof. Seeing none. Item A, donation business, donation, a park bench on Ball Field. I assume we'll handle this exactly the way we handled it in committee of the whole. We will table the resolution first, which we accepted. And then we followed up with a separate resolution regarding the donation. So. First, item A, be resolved, the council denies a donation request from Birds Creek Minor Ball for the request of five hundred sixty five dollars. To use the baseball field for a full season. Mover in a second or please. Counselor Tracy and Counselor Wayne, all in favor. Approved. I'm not sure how the follow-up resolution read there.
I can read it if you would like.
Yes, please.
Okay, so council or be it resolved that council approves the request. From Birds Creek Minor Ball to use the baseball field for the full season with the five hundred and sixty five dollars to be allocated. From the community support fund.
Okay, that's, I guess, you guys know what that means. So mover in a second or please. Counselor Miles, Counselor Wiggins, all in favor. Pass, thank you. Second one, be resolved, the council denies a donation request from the Bancroft Minor Football for the request of two hundred and sixty six dollars. Use a baseball field for June fourth to fifth, twenty twenty two. Mover in a second or please. Deputy Mayor, Counselor Kirby, all in favor, please. And then you can read the next resolution.
Yep, so be it resolved, council approves the request from the Bancroft Minor Football. To use the baseball field on June fourth to fifth, two thousand and twenty two with the two hundred and twenty six dollars to be allocated from the community support fund.
Mover in a second or please. Counselor Tracy and Counselor Wayne, Wendlin, you're there? Quick question, how is HST handled in this situation?
Um, so we would still have to remit the HST if you're donating the full amount.
Okay, okay, so that would be on our part. So the donation would actually be five sixty five or two twenty six plus HST and but then we get. Ninety percent of that back or whatever it is, eighty six or.
Yeah, so the five sixty five includes the HSK.
Oh, it does. Okay.
Yes, and that would be a hundred percent re sent in as if we collected it.
Okay, got it there. Okay, thank you. Okay, just clarifying that point. So all in favor, please? So pass, thank you. Yes.
I I assume under somebody will follow up with these groups, explain what we did and why we did it.
Yeah. Yeah, in case they only read the first part and get get upset, you know.
Yeah, that's my point.
Yeah, well, yeah, just just a matter of procedure. Yeah, okay, thanks. Okay, so the next one is Eastern Trails Alliance Donation Request, be resolved, the council corporation of the town of Bancroft is hereby approved. E O T A's donation requests for the maintenance of trails and amount of one thousand dollars for twenty twenty two. Moved by Council Wiggins, seconded by Council Miles, all in favor. So pass, thank you. Okay, we're moving into closed session. Be resolved, the council corporation of town of Bancroft is hereby moving to closed session pursuant to the municipal act. So two thousand and one, section two thirty nine, two H. Information explicitly supplied in confidence to the municipality or local. Board by Canada, a province or territory or crowd agency of any or any of them. Okay, a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiation carried on or to be carried on. Or on behalf of the municipality or local board. General nature, request pertaining to confidential government. Of Canada business, water and wastewater plant proposal, fourteen Flint Avenue. Could I have a mover and a second or please? Move by.